Always well. Thank you. Thank you for asking. Always well with you. Thank you so much.
Is this yours?
Thought I would. Know that's yours. You know how I know? Because this was the did presentation.
Good evening to each and every one of you all. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll start off, Commissioner Workshop tonight, Tuesday, March the eighteenth of twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. I want to thank you, your one, for being in the audience today and thank those on live feed as well. Commissioner, thank you for being here tonight along with staff. Madam Attorney, thank you, and Ms. Ryan, thank you from Senator Berman Office and others. Parents, thank you for being here tonight, especially our young people from the pre-law school at, pre-law program at Letchell Middle School. At this present time, Mr. Callum, you call the role, please, sir.
Commissioner King.
Present.
Commissioner Polk.
Present.
Commissioner Barry.
Present.
Mayor Cowles.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Callum. We'll continue with our discussion tonight. Our three and mass tech messaging and three A Civil Plus mass texting and notification. Senator Manager Campbell.
This is Mayor Commission. We, this item was asked to come back for discussion. Some mass text messaging, mass texting and notification system. We have a quote here from Civic Plus that provides our website. We've done some other work with some, did research on other entities that provide mass texting. Found an opportunity to look at some sites online that provide subscription form of texting, mass text messaging dependent upon the number of users. To, but the conversation here tonight is, I know that motion was made by Commissioner Polk. So if we can have that discussion as to how this commission would like to move forward with the mass texting or give some direction from, to staff as to what you would like to see in that space. So the conversation is open from the commission to guide us to give some direction to staff regarding texting.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Interim Public Commissioners for the mass texting at this present time. Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for those residents that don't have cell phones. How, how would that, how would this ma- mass text, texting and notification support them that don't have cellular phone, mobile, mobile, mobile device?
Well, the texting won't give them any support, but what we will have an opportunity to do is look at phone tree options for those residents that are still utilizing landlines only. We could look into phone trees and setting up a way that a phone call could reach each one of the residents in that form, in that, that is, that's not using a cellphone for texting.
Okay. And will we be able to come up with a, a method to notify these residents to get registered for the phone tree option? Being that they don't, you know, they don't, there's not a, a process like with cellphone. You can send a, a message out to join or, or whatever it, would there, would there be a, a method where we notify these residents with landlines to connect their phone service with the phone tree option?
The best way that I've learned here is word of mouth. As you take the commission and you learn of who has a landline and that you are aware of. Each of those commission, you just get that information to the city. And yes, you all have more connection with the residents than we would possibly do here at City Hall. Now, we can put a billboard out as you would learn on your agenda. We're going to have some instant alert messaging board that's going to come up on your agenda. We're going to also, we're hopefully soon, the message board at the intersection will be updated so that we're able to post the information there for the passersby. And just reaching out to City Hall, that is one method. Now, I know in the conversation held earlier, i- it was about knocking on doors and getting the word out in that fashion. Of course, groups could make that a task or a activity, volunteer activity, to knock on doors and pass the information out as, as we create a type of list or application, so to speak, that's one, two, three, he put this information in and then it's back here at City Hall. And then we'll be able to update all of the information, be it a text message and/or landline, phone tree or mass texting. We find our way whichever works best for that res- for the resident.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I, I like this idea and I would, I would, I would love to take part in the gathering up some groups and going out door to door, making sure that, you know, if we decide to adopt this method, I would love to go out and knock on the doors and inform and sign up the residents for this, this program to keep them informed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Commissioner Polk.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. And thank you. And also would like to say thank you, Senator Manager Campbell, for putting this information together for us during the research. And as a quick question, these were your notes, Mr. Manager, here? That's all. Say one thing I do love about the program is that, I was wondering if these were, they were your words?
Okay.
Because I, I saw some recommendations in there. But again, I did all the words of my colleague, Commissioner King. You know, I, I think this will be a great opportunity for us to sit aside, be to innovate. It's an opportunity for us to supplement our technology with a personal touch and to be able to reach our residents in a way that corporate world, business world, church world are reaching their parishioners and customers in this day and age. So I'm all for it and I think that it's, it's a great, great, great opportunity for us to show forth our level of innovation in the City of South Bay. My only, my only thoughts were the pricing of it, just to hear more from City Manager, Madam Treasurer, someone else who would have more insight, but other than that, I'm all for it.
And when you say more, the pricing.
I noticed that in your notes, you said you didn't quite understand the increase. I see they had a price for the first year with the automatic one-year renewal term. There'll be an increase on the second year, automatic. So you say you didn't quite understand it. So my manager don't understand it. Man, I have a question about it.
And that was a note, that note was to Civic Plus very specifically as to why the increase at the time. Now, this is a, this quote was received in twenty twenty four, February twenty twenty four, and presented to the commission last year. Now, I would have to do some additional, I mean, research. They haven't given me a new rate for twenty twenty five. So these are notes from the previous year, but they also said they will honor it. So I was just gave you a conversation from twenty four. Civic Plus did state that they would honor the pricing that was quoted last year for their texting, for their disservice.
I do have one more thought. In your research, Mr. Manager, did you get the opportunity to check in that their, their application? Like, because I believe they have an app. I don't know if it is incorporated within the mass text messaging, but they have an app that cities will be able to download. Or the residents can download the app on their phones and will receive push notifications. So that's another form of being able to notify the residents. Once they have the app downloaded on their phone, which the app would help us be able to present the information that we have on our website to the residents. And then the push, push notifications would automatically come through the apps.
Yes, and that, this will include the push notification piece through the app as well. The, as Commissioner King was stating, it is getting the residents to provide us and feeling comfortable providing us that contact information. Just like, like everywhere else. You provide, you, you don't want to become solicited for a whole bunch of information. You only get a whole lot of text messaging and people are just cautious about that information. And we did receive that, even when we were doing the Rescue Plan Act applications. Because we took a lot of that information and the website, not the website, but their email addresses, and it was on the application that you're at. You will re-subscribe to the city's website and what have you. Some residents said, I'm not giving you that information. I don't want it. And they scratched it out. And it's like, no, I don't want to be published. I don't want you to do any of that information. Take my information and use it. So we did not. And it's just that some people are cautious, but it's getting them to feel comfortable with providing us that data so that we are able to communicate with them as this commission is seeking us to do.
Yes, sir. I, I'll just add this note. One of my mottos are, you know, we want to elevate. We want to innovate. We also want to elevate, want to elevate our residents. So empower, thank you. So empowerment plus education equals elevation. So when we are empowering the residents with these tools and also educating them, long-term, we get to elevate our residents. Hey, in South Bay, we get messages that remind us when the city commission meeting is. We get messages in South Bay that lets us know if, like now, there's a gas leak on twenty seven. So I really think the residents will buy into it, knowing that we are empowering and educating in the result to elevate them. I think it'll be a campaign, something that, it, it may be challenging, you know, based off what you're saying from the past, but I think something that is worth for us to put, put forth effort.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Commissioner Barry.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to explore this literature. And a feature that is very impressive to me is our system integrates with FEMA Emergency Management. That's I-PAW-S, P-A-W-S. That, that feature is very critical for rural, small communities. And to have that within this Civic Plus mass texting and notification system, for me, is a plus. In addition to that, I'm very concerned about the privacy issues that may be associated with this. That education means the empowerment, knowing the limitations. How much information are you willing to disclose? What are the limits? This is open space and as we communicate and empower and educate in this open space, we must critically address the tools that we use. So I would support a type of training for the population. You noted here that you had a demonstration and this is a comparative demonstration. Or is this just our tool? Self-guided demo allows you to explore mass notification. So if I were to add an item for this description, I would add safeguards, disclosure regarding privacy issue. I would also add the fiscal impact to the city. And I would also add self-training demonstration. I think that is a plus. So to recap, the I-PAW-S feature that provides notification through FEMA, et cetera. Polk mentioned the gas leak, so things like that. And then we have ins- situations throughout the city that we need to just have that information available, City. Why? Because what I have experienced, if the information is in the wrong hand, that information is distorted before it gets to the user. And that's how the system, I, I don't know if it's self-correcting itself, but there are certain restrictive features that I would add to, and one is privacy. And the other is this mass communication, its limitations and the investment or impact, fiscal impact on the City of South Bay. Those are the items. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. And Mr. Manager, you have anything you want to, Vice Baron McKevan?
I just have one question. Is there another city that we piggybacking on that, that's currently using this type of system?
No, this was just research. I didn't do any piggybacking or any, what other cities are doing. What providers that they are using? So I know that they are, some cities are using this mass texting, but which, what providers they are using, I haven't done that level of research.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to add to Vice Mayor's question, on their website, at the bottom, it has like the list of cities they're using. I don't know what their pricing are, but I saw Wellington, some other cities.
Yeah, I think it's a great tool, though, to relay the messages to the residents in a timely fashion. I'm in support of this resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Baron. Commissioner King.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I also want to add as well, Mr. Manager, could you explain or, you know, the process with using this system with our residents that's hearing impaired and, and blind? You know, having access to this, this program.
Now, it would be ADA compliant on their side. It is the Civic Plus responsibility that their tool is ADA compliant. So it, that, it would work in that space. Nothing that the city manager would have to do, other than to ensure that it is in place. But I know the companies around every, all of them require to be ADA compliant as they communicate with the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner King, and thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Thank you, Commissioner, as well. Last year, when, when this was, you know, I was focusing on this as well last year, and I had the opportunity to speak with a representative from Civic Plus. And they said they would design whatever you, whatever your city want, they will be able to design it for your city, to fit your city there. And I had numbers of conversations with the individual last year about this year. And I guess by the conversation come up again from Commissioner Polk. That's the reason that the city management has started digging in it, but was on our radar in the past. And I'm in support of all of this. And whatever way that we wanted to fit our city here, I feel that the city manager contacted representative, talked to them and see precise of whatever the conversation we have had tonight in reference to what your suggestion is, the city manager can voice that with the representative and see as possible to fit with our, with our city. In addition to a question at this present time, reference to our discussion on three.
On three, I'm looking at the Accounts Payable Report. How is that reflected? That is reflected in this report because are we using a part of the system now? Or are we thinking about expanding the system or?
This would be an expansion to what's in your Accounts Payable Report is R E P apostrophe D, rep. Rep gives us the video on our website. It is providing that Ask South Bay button.
Yes.
Where we're able to do video. So if a resident hit that, press that button, ask a question, and it goes to that department, depending upon the question, and that department head or designated is able to provide a video answer to that rep to the question. This is mass texting. This is just us sending out text messages to that, to the subscriber directly. So it would be an expansion to as to how we communicate with the residents.
Okay, that's sufficient for now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Barry, and thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. We'll continue with our discussion in reference to B Town Hall Meeting. Senator Manager Campbell. I know this will discuss among the commissioners. So you take this, take this, take the deal, yes, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, this is a, I think I know, but if I, I just want to not think I know. Is it the will of the commission for the manager, not, not so much Civic Plus, but to move forward with getting quotes and bringing information back so that we're able to properly procure this item for mass texting?
I would like a demonstration, maybe.
See as possible to have a representative, be proud to give a demonstration on this, sir, if is possible.
Using that mass testing, texting model, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Madam, my turn.
If I may suggest, if you all do have a representative, since this is something that you would be procuring, you would invite companies that would seek to possibly bid on it as opposed to one company.
I understand.
Thank you. Okay, we'll continue.
And we, since we are focusing on rural communities in Chalilahasi, we, I was there. But anyway, the rural piece, and I would encourage staff to pursue any grants or possibility of funding and with the focus on rural communities. Let's say population five thousand or less. Because I see this as an economic engine, the reaching, the marketing, that's your marketing piece. So let's, if we can, let's explore that.
Right.
Funding from, for rural communities, expanding their technology outreach. We can do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. In addition to a question for the discussion upon the Civic Plus mass texting and notification system. In addition to a question from this commission, we will move forward.
You have a direction?
I, I have my direction. Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Recap those directions for us. We have time. Just recap a few, the direction.
I'm going to re, I'm going to pursue additional companies that's able to, if, if they could all provide a demonstration.
Yes.
However, we will properly procure this item in accordance to our procurement policy and move forward with the mass texting capabilities here in the City of South Bay.
Okay.
Now, as far as the town hall conversation, I know that also this was placed on the agenda for future agenda item. It is, I hope you all have your calendars out so that you're able to, one, two, tonight is find a date for your town hall and, or, and your topics of conversation for the town hall meeting. And, and that's what we want to, I'm, I'm under the impression is what we want to meet and get done tonight.
May I share?
Commissioner, what timeframe will, reference, what timeframe, or reference to?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
About six.
Yes, yes.
Repeat that, Vice Mayor.
About six o'clock? Six to seven or?
Okay, what month?
I hope it's been spooling out because we have a lot of activities in preparation for graduation, in preparation for vacations, et cetera. So at, school closes for Palm Beach County, when is it? May?
Talking about for, you get out for the summer?
For the summer.
May thirtieth.
Okay.
So we have April and May, two months available at this present time, the first of May and, and time under April in order to have our town hall meeting.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
If I'm understanding correctly, Dr. Barry, you were suggesting after school is out. But I think we were, in our previous discussion, was to do it before. Can't remember.
I think it was before, I, I think from, from my recollection, I think you said do it before the school is out.
Right, but after the close of session.
Session, yes, correct. Session closing what, in May?
May second.
May second, Mr. Ryan.
As a focal point, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, a focal point, what direction are we taking this town hall? Initially, I wanted to focus on infrastructure. And in addition to infrastructure. That focus topic should guide our context. That should be the, what they call it, the nucleus of all our discussion. Because infrastructure is a wraparound. Everything points, but every election seat comes right back to wraparound. So, and as it wraps around to the public, if we get a sharp focus on infrastructure and we can say, how is this connected? These are the funds we're generating because when you build the streets out, you have to sustain them. Do you have your road repair in place? So I see finance playing a role in here. I see specific information about direction. And that's what I see. Improvements, we talk about the village. Several days ago, I discovered a new village in South Bay. It's, neighborhood.
Commissioner, what, what, what I like, what I like for the commission to do.
Thank you.
Put things together, what they want to really discuss and reference our town hall meeting in order to capture their residents in the City of South Bay. You can throw a lot of stuff out there, but a lot of residents are really not interested in stuff. But you want to make sure that things are going to capture their attention and the things that they are concerned as well. We have had the opportunity to speak with a lot of residents in the City of South Bay. We have our opportunity to hear what they says about different things that's taking place within the City of South Bay. So the residents that came to you and spoke to you about what is taking place in this area, takes place in that area, what you're doing about this and doing about that there. These are the things that we need to focus on in reference of what we, from by hearing from the residents within the City of South Bay. And then other things that we can add on to and how we trying to enhance the City of South Bay and other investors that's coming to the City of South Bay. Want to make sure that they know what is coming because due to the fact that we've been stagnated for a long time. We on, we on the right track now. We are moving in the right direction. And these are the things that our residents want to hear, the direction that this city going and not focus back, going to continue to focus forward. So whatever ideas that you have that you want to make sure that is a part of this, this town hall meeting, bring it to the city manager where we can put, to put this together. Because due to the fact that this town hall meeting is going to be about all of us. Every commissioner sits up on these ideas would be a part of this town hall meeting. And you know the residents have talked to you about different things that have taken place or what they like to see in the City of South Bay. So you have a, you have the right to voice your opinion and let them know what we are doing and the direction we're going within the City of South Bay. So that's what I want this town hall meeting to be about. I want this town hall meeting to be about, you know, to take you across Atlanta and then bring you back on this side here. We're talking about City of South Bay. That's what I'm focused on. And that's what the residents want to see as well, of what's taking place in the City of South Bay, okay?
So are we going to have, are we going to allow the residents to also partake in this town hall meeting as well to voice their concerns?
Well, that's why you want to talk to them and find out precisely what they're really concerned about. So therefore, when we get to start talking about this town hall meeting, we're going to put everything together, everything together. So we bring it out to the, to the residents, they'll know exactly. Yes, I had the opportunity to talk to Commissioner King, Commissioner Polk, Commissioner Barry, Vice Mayor McKevan, about different things affecting the City of South Bay. So therefore, you'll know that you have captured their attention. You have captured their attention. You heard what they were saying and you heard their concern as well. Yes, they will have opportunity to ask questions as well. But, you know, we don't want to be a three or four hour town hall meeting. We don't want that. Because when it be a long town hall meeting, everybody get bored, they, they forgot about everything that you have said. But we want to make sure that we capture their attention. We want to make sure they hear everything that we are saying from, 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 from a commissioner's standpoint, in the direction we're going in the city. But they will have, you know, take part in it as well. Commissioner Polk, I know you wanted to say something. Commissioner King wanted to say something as well.
Okay, so, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with you hundred percent. So now, when we first brought it up about the town hall, it was all things roles. So now, when we first brought it up about the town hall, it was all things roads. Because all of us had agreed that that's what our constituents are mainly, um, addressing us with. And I had a phone call with the city manager, um, prior to us bringing this up. In fact, that was when I mentioned to him about, I say, man, the way you just explained all things roads to me, I think that should, it will, we will benefit from explaining that to the residents. Okay, and I asked questions, but for the most part, outlining the projects that are already in the works, the projects that are, are coming up. Some that are funded, some we're waiting on funding, and I believe if you just do all things road, that'll take you an hour. And, and City Manager has a, a really, um, efficient way of explaining it. So he's just, you know, make him be the keynote speaker. And I mean, he really explained it well. And then, you know, you have questions. Cause it's not about us, it's not, the town hall not about us. We don't have to speak at all. You know, we just want the residents to get the education that we have about the roads.
Mayor Commission, before, I apologize, I, I know that we're going into our commission meeting. If we, um, you're looking at your calendars, you want to do, I heard your date after school. But I, it, you're trying to do something in either April or May. Can we get a? Cause I'm look, I, we can go with April twenty second. First, my question is, do you wanna go in May, April or May? My second question is going to be, is it, you wanna keep it consistent with your commission dates or commission day, which are Tuesdays, and we could have it on an alternating Tuesday at six P M. So those would be my two questions. If you're going with April, I would say April twenty second at six P M. It is a, uh, alternating day for our commission meeting. Alternating Tuesday at six P M. Or you could go with, um, another, a separate Tuesday sometime in May as well, uh, alternating Tuesday would be May thirteenth. For a town hall meeting to take place at that time. But it is, uh, the dates are there for you all to give some direction. I like the May thirteenth.
May thirteenth as well. I necessarily I'm focusing on May the thirteenth, it's great.
May thirteenth, six P M, all things roads.
All things road, that's your infrastructure.
May thirteenth is all right for this commission?
Yes.
Yes.
May the thirteenth, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will begin working on the agenda and the planning. Now, I will reach out at a later date when, uh, for a location, um, if you wanna do something other than, um, the commission chambers. So I would
Take it to the people.
Reach out. Our last town hall, previous town hall meetings, I will tell you, they took place outdoors and were under the tent. So we can look at some themes else, uh, depending upon the weather in April. And getting a, a facility, something covered. We will look at it and start working towards that date to come up with the location. Thank you, Mayor Commission.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. Thank you, City Manager Campbell. Entertained motion to adjourn the workshop?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk. Workshop adjourned. Do anyone need to lead the dais? Here, none? Just for the time, uh, we'll start our, our regular meeting at seven oh three P M. I'd like to thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and thank you for being a part of this commissioning meeting. Thank the visitors, thank the parents. And especially thank our young people and I thank the instructor as well for being here for our, uh, uh, lecture pre-law program, which is a great and wonderful program with the dyke we have sitting on the dais with Mrs. Lucas, who is from that particular program. And, uh, she'll probably be calling the road tonight and then we'll move forward for mayor. So at this present time, we have the roll called by Mr. Collins after we have the pledge of lea, uh, have a, have the roll called, the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Prayer by Commissioner Polk, unless you want to ordinate, okay? Prayer by Pastor B, okay? Thank you, sir. At this present time, Mr. Collins, will you call the roll, please, sir? Oh, Ms. Lucas?
Mayor Joe House, oh, yeah, Mayor Joe House.
Present.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Present.
Commissioner Berry.
Present.
Commissioner Polk.
Present.
Commissioner King.
Present.
City Manager Campbell.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas. Appreciate it. Let us all stand, please.
It's about my ears. Turn our wise God, our Father God, we thank you for this day, God. We thank you for this meeting, God, that you've set aside for us to discuss the business of this, our community, this, our city, God. We pray that you continue to order our commissioners and our mayor steps, uh, lead the city manager, the attorneys, God, and be with Palm Beach Sheriff Department as we go about, God, making this community better and making this community safer. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor B. We do appreciate that wonderful, great prayer, sir, because we always wanna make sure they are proud of it.
Thank you.
You saw our regular meeting, sir. Thank you. It's caused our voting conflict. Commissioner King.
No conflict, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Polk?
None, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Berry?
No.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McKelvin?
None, sir.
All right, thank you. And none for me either. We'll continue with our agenda for tonight. Uh, presentation of our proclamation, uh, Mr. Collins, and let move Palm Beach County Proclamation. Mr. Collins?
Proclamation, whereas the city of South Bay takes special notice and acknowledges exceptional organizations that help residents who live, work, and play within jur, the jurisdiction. And whereas in twenty fourteen, Digital Vibes became a nonprofit to reach out to undeserved youth in Palm Beach County by empowering them through dance fitness, technology, and the arts. And whereas Digital Vibes partners with the Palm Health Foundation annually to host the Let's Move Commit to Change Physical Activity Challenge, a countywide initiative that focuses on physical activity, nutrition, and healthy behaviors. And whereas Digital Vibes, Inc. and Palm Health Foundation presents the annual challenge, which takes place annually from March first to thirty first and encourages individuals within and beyond Palm Beach County to take charge to their health, to take charge of their health by participating in fun fitness exercises. And whereas the Let's Move Initiative was originally introduced on a national level by First Lady Michelle Obama in two thousand and ten with the goal of decreasing childhood obesity throughout the United States due to the fact that nearly one in three children in the United States are overweight or obese. And if this problem persists, persists, one third of all children born in two thousand or later will suffer from diabetes at some point in their lives or will face other obesity-related health problems such as heart disease, high blood pressure, asthma, and cancer. And whereas Digital Vibes and the Palm Health Foundation invite all residents to take the challenge to move by forming teams, registering online, committing to exercising for at least thirty minutes a day throughout the month of March and logging their minutes on the Let's Move website. W W W dot letsmoop p B C dot org. In two thousand and twelve, Palm Beach County logged one hundred thousand minutes in the first year of the challenge. And we have met the challenge each year since, rising in twenty twenty four to over seventy-two million minutes logged. Now, therefore, Mayor Joe House of South Bay do hereby proclaim the month of March as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month and urge all citizens to join us in moving to improve their fitness, mental health, and overall health. Proclaim this eighteenth day of March, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. We do appreciate it. We try to make sure that we present a proclamation every year in reference to this Let's Move. And it's very important that we look out for our health, you know, very important. Because we see that so many people are dying from different, uh, high blood pressure, diabetes, and all the other things there. So let's be a part of this, uh, let's continue to do it. Let's continue to promote it each and every year because it's very, very important. And I see, when we had bicycle riding in the city of South Bay, we tried to invite as many people as possible. I know some people are afraid to ride the bicycle, but we tried to make sure that we invite them to come out and be a part of what we're doing in the city of South Bay, to give them an opportunity just to move some of the, some of the, 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 the body parts, also the blood per, the blood, you know, the fluid really great there. And I just wanna say thank you all, and I do appreciate it. Mr. Collins, City Manager, staff, thank you for the proclamation along with our Commissioner. We'll continue with our agenda tonight. Opportunity for the public to address the Commissioner. Mr. Collins?
Yes, we have to. Pastor Jamarius Bean and Ms. Virginia Crawford.
All right, thank you. Pastor, will you give your name and your address, please, sir?
Pastor Jamarius Bean, Mount Cavrey, one eighty Southwest Tenth Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, here in South Bay. Um, greetings, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Um, coming for you, uh, for, uh, two reasons, just to update you, um, of community, um, activities, different things that's going on. Um, I usually give the city manager, uh, update before I come, so hopefully he don't beat me up. But there's, uh, letters, um, also representing Gamma tonight as well. Um, we're having a prayer breakfast on Saturday starting at nine A M. Um, it is completely free. Um, we're axing amen for pastors in the community, our, um, commissioners, leaders in the community. Uh, we use the wording, um, faithful leaders, but any leader in the community to come out so we can try to have, um, a sense of unity, um, within our community, um, with our leaders and see how we can work together on one accord to get things done. Not only for our churches, but for our community, especially dealing with our younger kids, um, that's going to be on spring break, that's going to be during the summer and everything. Um, Gamma is also, we've just kicked off, um, aviation. Um, we had our grand opening today at three o'clock. Um, we have a total of sixteen kids, uh, so far. Um, our max will be thirty-seven, um, kids for that program. Um, it's a four-year program. We're giving them the opportunity to earn not only a drone license, but also their pilot's license by the end of the four-year term. Um, they have to do a hundred community hours within our city. Um, so if that's raking a yard, picking up paper throughout the community, painting somebody's house, there's activities that we want to teach them um, to, to give back and to serve. Um, also, um, we're, um, partnering with, um, the fire department as well. Um, out at West Tech, um, they have a program that will be on Monday nights, um, Monday evenings, um, as well. Four-year program, teaching our childrens about, um, the fire, the parole, fire department, um, and different things to, to educate them. And by the time they're finished that, they also have that opportunity, um, to have a job as a firefighter. Um, so we're, we are excited about that. Those are just a couple of things that we're, we are looking into, um, as of now. We're still working on our C T O mentorship program that we do every summer. Um, looking forward to that, um, as well. But also, also on, um, so we ax and encourage you all, amen, to help us spread the word, to come out on the, uh, twenty-second, I believe it is, this Saturday, um, to, it'll be at, um, First Baptist Church, again at nine A M to eleven. Um, we know we have the barbecue deal over there at the park, um, that, that day as well. But we want to try to come together so that we can brainstorm together, not just, uh, Gamma pastors, not just, you know, a certain group coming together, brainstorming for the community. Um, we're also, also, since I'm the vice president, we're also, I've spoke with you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager and, uh, Pastor Polk, um, briefly, um, on it, on occasions, that we're also looking into bringing the prayer walk, um, here to South Bay as well. Um, hopefully by May, um, I'm gonna get with the city manager and see what we all, we have to do, um, to make that happen, starting at least in May, um, by, by God's grace. Um, nevertheless, um, also, also, um, now we're switching from Gamma to Mount Cavrey. Um, on the twenty-seventh, the twenty-seventh of April, um, not the twenty-seventh, well, the twenty-sixth, let's start at the twenty-sixth. On the twenty-sixth of April, we are having a event, um, and I'm not calling it a Mount Cavrey event. It is a community event. Um, I don't want Mount Cavrey to be the center of it. This is a community-wide event for our residents, for our community. Um, Belgrade, Pohokee, they're welcome, but this is originally for South Bay. Um, as, as we know and as we look at, um, the spikes of H I V, um, within our city and surrounding cities, um, we will have, um, Healthy Glaze there, um, Palm West, uh, Foundation, um, um, Health Council there, and so many others. I think it's like five or six altogether that would be there, um, doing, as you said, Mr. Mayor, diabetes check, blood pressure checks, um, giving people information if they don't have insurance, um, helping them fill out, um, the information to get the insurance and, um, so many other programs. We will have the grill fired up. We will have, I've already called, um, Feeding South Florida for, um, a special food edition, uh, event. Um, so we will have, be giving out food and stuff to the residents on that day. We wanna make that day a grand occasion, um, to give back to our community and to educate them and encourage them to get tested. Everybody that will be getting tested, whether it's a, a checking their sugar, um, they all will get a Winn-Dixie twenty-five dollar gift card. And, and I planned on being, uh, one to get tested for all of it because I think a leader should lead by example. Uh, so I'm going to do so and I ask that you all, amen, come on out on that day. We have, um, about eight sponsors all together um, to, to help push this, push this forward. And we're, this, like I said, it's not a Mount Cavrey event, it's a South Bay community event. Um, so we wanted to make that a grand occasion. So I just came here to give you all an update on some of the things that, um, we got cooking, um, um, for our residents, for our community. Um, thank you all for your time.
What time is that event?
Um, this one here on the twenty, on the twenty-sixth, it will be from eleven to two P M, eleven, two to two P M.
Thank you, Pastor. I do appreciate all the information and thank the work that you and your congregation doing within the city of South Bay. On this upcoming Thursday, they're having a Tri-City Health Fair as well in the city of Pohokee. So if anyone that really is available, please join them down in Pohokee as well. Thank you for the things that you're doing because due to the fact, we're talking about health, we're concerned about peoples now, you know, so that's a wonderful thing. And I wanna just thank you for inviting me Saturday to the prayer breakfast as well, sir. We do appreciate that. I know we've been having a lot of prayer breakfasts around in the Tri-City area, and it's great. So I'm encouraging you, saying one of you all that, these events are taking place in the Glaze area, please, please be a part of them because it mean a great deal. Even with the thing that was our young people now with the fire department and dealing with the pilot, the pilot or training there or whatever, classes or whatever. Get your kids involved in these things because you always said there's nothing for the kids to do. So many things are coming to the Glaze area now. It take you to make sure, as parents, make sure that your kids is a part of these different things. It's easy to push them on someone else, but we want you to be a part of what's taking place in your children's life there along with the instructors and one that bringing these different types of activity to the Glaze area. Again, Pastor, thank you, and I do appreciate you being here tonight, sir.
Thank you, if I may. And this, this, the aviation program, it is held at Crossroad Academy at three P M to five. It's not a Crossroad Academy ordeal. It's for every child, no matter what school they go through. It's like an after-school program, um, from the ages of thirteen to seventeen. Um, so, and, uh, and the same thing with the fire department, the same age, same criterias. All we have to have is the parent's consent. And, um, we do take them, um, flying, even in the summer, they will be, have grace with the privilege to go to the Bahamas, um, on a plane and, and just to see other things and experience other things outside of our Tri-Cities.
Great. Another program. Great. Really great. Thank you, Pastor.
Pastor Bean, if you could, your April event, can you send that to us digitally so we could have it placed in?
And also to add on to what Pastor's saying, that, that the prayer walk, I remember a long time ago when the law, the shooting, the thing was taking place in the Glaze area. We had prayer walks in every city, every city we had this year. So they starting it again, be a part of the prayer walk because due to the fact, we see a lot of shooting and killing that's taking place again in the Glaze area. Uh, we'll continue. Mr. Collins?
Ms. Crawford?
I'm sorry about that, Ms. Crawford.
Virginia Crawford, two hundred Northwest Third Avenue, South Bay, Florida. I have a question that might not be on the agenda, but I wanted to know, village by the lake. I have a question that might not be on the agenda, but I wanted to know, Village by the Lake, who is going to own Village by the Lake?
It is a South Bay, currently a South Bay initiative at the moment. But the ownership, it's South Bay initiative, it's gonna be on city property. But then it's also, it may grow, let me answer this question this way. We are in the infancy of it, but it has the potential of growing into a public-private partnership or into multi-family units. So right now, we're just in the planning phase, so there is no ownership, because the city owns the vision at this present moment.
That's what I was wondering, whether it's gonna be privately, you know, was the city just gonna donate the land and somebody's gonna privately own all of this, or was the city gonna own?
That's not even a conversation. Yeah, it's not even a conversation at this moment, we're just planning.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Crawford, we do appreciate it. At this present time, I just want to say thanks to Dr. Jacobs for this, being a part of the young people's life. And we have the Lakeshore Pre-Law student here tonight, and we have Ms. Lucas here tonight, and she just want to say a few words to the Commission, to the residents. At this present time, with the students, along with the principal and the instructor there, will you please stand with the young people, if you don't mind? I know, Mr. McKelvin, I know that you're here tonight, sir, and I thank you for being here tonight, sir.
That's my cover.
I'm sorry.
With the parents of the, of the young people, all the parents that's here tonight, will you stand with the, stand as well? I know the one mother in the back there.
I go now? Good evening, my name is Dia Lucas. I am a seventh grade pre-law student from Lakeshore Middle School. To Honorable Ma- Mayor Joe Cowes, Vice Mayor McKelvin, the Commissioners, Barry Polk and King, last but not least, with much respect, City Manager, Mr. Lee Andre Campbell, and the City Attorney, Mrs. Weeks. As Dr. Jacobs keeps us abreast daily of what is going on in our national, state, and local political arena, we are facing a lot, we are facing a lot of challenges. Even though we are children, these changes affect us too. We have entered into a new year, new national administration, and a new president too. I challenge this Commission tonight to not lose focus, but to keep taking care of business here in South Bay. The citizens and children are still counting and depending on each other of you, each of you. It is said that we are the future. I beg the difference, we are the present. I wish you all a productive meeting tonight with God's blessings. Mayor Com- Mayor Commission, City Manager and City Attorney, and Citizens of South Bay, let's move forward together. It is my distinct honor and privilege to sit among you again tonight to, and to witness this memorable occasion. On behalf of the Lakeshore Middle School Pre-Law Stud- Law Students, our Instructor and Coordinator, Dr. Wilhelmina Jacobs, we say thank you for this privilege. With God, all things are possible if we only believe. Mayor Cowes and Commissioners, may I take a moment of personal privilege, if I may? At this time, I would like my classmates and Commissioners to join me in welcoming and introducing our newest Assistant Principal for the seventh grade, Mr. Reginald McKelvin. Welcome, Mr. McKelvin, to the Lakeshore Middle School family and your first Commisional meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas, we do appreciate that. Mr. Kevin, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, sir, and looking forward to seeing you each and every month. If you can't make out all each meeting, I hopefully will see you at least once a month. Mr. High Tower, who's the Principal of Rosenwald, I think that Vice Mayor kind of pulled him in and told him you have to be at these Commission meetings. But thank you for being here tonight, we do appreciate you. Ms. Jacob, thank you, and staff, thank you as well, along with the mothers and the fathers who come to our Commissioner meeting. And Luca, thank you, we do appreciate you. We'll continue, we'll continue with our agenda for the night, Consent Agenda. February eighteenth to twenty-twenty-fifth, City, City Commission Workshop, and approve a City Commissioner meeting, March eighteenth to twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Managers, in addition to this agenda.
You will have an addition to this agenda, you're in your, it is again March. It is this Commission's annual organization meeting, so following the consideration of your consent agenda items, we will have our annual organization meeting take place. Organization appointments, not meetings, the organization appointment take place.
Thank you, sir. Any, any questions for the Consent Agenda at this present time from this Commission?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, can we move the Rosenwald Elementary School report up? Because I know Mr. High Tower will have another engagement he has to do.
I'm okay with it, what about the Commission?
So moved.
Thank you, sir, we do appreciate it. Alright, any question for the Consent Agenda at this present time? Here, non, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barry. Any questions for the Consent Agenda at this present time? Here, non, Mr. Collins, call the roll, please.
Commissioner King. Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Collins, and I thank you, Commissioner Press, by all Commissioners at this present time. We, it's not on your agenda, but you had to add on the reference to the organization and reference to the Commission at this present time. We consider the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, the Secretary, and I thank the City Attorney and the City Clerk, am I correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
And the City Treasurer.
It is the Mayor, Vice Mayor, Treasurer, Attorney, and City Clerk.
Thank you.
Alright, at this present time, we'll start with the Mayor. At this present time, the, it's open for the position of Mayor of the City of South Bay. May I have a motion and a second to approve?
I move to continue our leadership as Mayor with Mayor Cowes, so I nominate Mayor Cowes, Joe Cowes.
Second in motion.
Do we have a motion and a second in addition nomination for the Mayor of the city of South Bay? We have a motion by Commissioner Barry, the second by Vice Mayor McKelvin. In addition to, one, close on the said name, at this present time, Vice Mayor. Call the roll, I'm sorry, call the roll.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, thank you, sir, we'll continue, passed by all Commissioners. Now, it's open for the position of Vice Mayor.
I move to continue the leadership of Vice Mayor under McKelvin.
We have a motion.
Mr. McKelvin.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Barry for Vice Mayor McKelvin for the position. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk. In addition, one, at this present time, for the position of Vice Mayor within the city of South Bay. Here, non, to close on the said name, Mr. Collins, call the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, it passes by all Commissioners. Now, it's, the floor is open now for the nomination of Treasurer.
I make a move for Commissioner Barry to remain in her role as the Treasurer for the city of South Bay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barry for Vice Mayor McKelvin for Commissioner Barry. Anyone else? May I have a second in reference to the said name? I second their motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more nominations? Call the roll.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Collins, passed by all Commissioners. At this present time, we have, the floor is open for the position of our City Attorney.
I move to continue our leadership with the legal advice expertise from our present attorney, Attorney Weeks.
Second in motion.
We have a motion and a second to, for our Attorney Weeks. Do we have any other names, say so, say say. Here, non? Mr. Collins, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, it passes by all Commissioners, thank you, at this present time. Joe Cowes is the Mayor of the city of South Bay, Vice Mayor McKelvin, at Treasurer, Commissioner Barry, and our wonderful attorney, Sweets. Thank you all. Yes, City Clerk, thank you, sir. Now the floor is open for City Clerk, may I have a motion and a second?
I make a motion to continue with Ms. Ms. Intedel Bosqués as our City Clerk for the city of South Bay.
We have a motion by Commissioner McKelvin.
Our second.
Second by Commissioner Barry. In addition to nominees, in reference to the clerk position within the city of South Bay. Here, non? Close on the said name, Mr. Collins, call the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Collins, it passes by all Commissioners, thank you Commissioners for moving this forward. We'll continue to move the city forward with the said names and the position here in the city of South Bay. And we continue with our agenda for tonight. Resolution zero seven dash twenty-twenty-five, Mr. Collins. You want to say something?
Mr. High Tower?
Stream members, High Tower, we have a report from Rosenwald Elementary School. You can go forward, sir.
To the elected officials of South Bay, good evening, good evening to the residents, as well as the beautiful community of South Bay. I come to give you an update, updated report of Rosenwald. And currently, right now, we're currently in testing season, so we're currently tutoring our students to prepare them for PM three, which is the upcoming assessment, which determine if third grade will transition to fourth grade, and how well we perform will determine if we make a letter grade of an A, B, or possibly F. In March, on this Friday, we have Boots at the Wall. And so what Boots at the Walls is giving our students an exposure, experience with wearing cowboy boots in the western community of South Bay. Followed by next week, our students are actually on spring break. But however, when they return back from spring break, they actually take a writing assessment on the beginning of April, which is April the second. Followed by Mr. McKelvin, which is Dean McKelvin, which is also Vice Mayor McKelvin. He also has the Battle of the Bands on the fifth of April, in which he will, his band will be performing against all of the bands in Palm Beach County, elementary, middle, as well as high school. Followed by Black Gold Jubilee, our drum line will perform at Black Gold Jubilee Parade on April the twelfth. And then we will have a spring break holiday, which is Good Friday on the eighteenth. And then K-two will begin their star assessment. It's been a time where, where students will be assessed only in third, fourth, and fifth. But now students begin, start, begin starting assessments now in the kindergarten. So once student reach, once students reaches our kindergarten level, they begin getting assessed and begin starting their assessments as a kindergarten student. On April twenty-fourth, we have our Take Your Child to School Day, and we will send out flyers to all of our students and to all of our residents in the community for our Take Your Child to School Day. Any questions?
Any question for the transmission for Mr. High Tower's report?
We're having our SAC meeting in April, correct?
Yes, ma'am, the SAC meeting is actually on the ninth. Yes, the ninth.
Is that the last SAC meeting for the year, or will we have one in May?
I think we have one in May, but I have to look at the schedule. I can give you a call tomorrow to verify that schedule with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Mr. High Tower, we appreciate you bringing that report and reference to what's going on at Rosenwald Elementary School. We've done a fantastic job as a leader and then along to staff members as well. And I love the drum line that you have. I think I, sometime I'd be setting that in the, on my porch in the afternoon, I hear there be no drums there, you know, just to hear the kids, you know. It's really great to see how active those young people are, and then the parents is involved as well. Joe, continue to do the wonderful what you do as a leader and then your staff members, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll continue with our agenda for the night, Resolution zero seven twenty-twenty-five, Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
Resolution number zero seven dash twenty-twenty-five. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, urging the Florida State Legislature to enact legislation to provide public records exemption for municipal clerks and employees who perform municipal elections work or have any part in code enforcement functions of a city, provided for adoption of representations, provided for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, City Manager Campbell.
Superior Commissioner, the Florida Association of City Clerks put this item, urging each municipality in the state of Florida to move this item forward for legislation action. Municipal clerks often administer elections, and some election workers have been targeted for threats and violence due to the nature of materials they are responsible for. Municipal clerks are often involved in legal enforcement proceedings and actions related to violations of codes and ordinances, and occasionally, these proceedings have led to retaliation and threats by defendants. Currently, public records exemptions in Florida include those for local personnel who either investigate, enforce, or otherwise provide a service that can result in contentious interactions when action is taken and municipal clerks and their staff, staff falls within the need for a window for greater protection. Staff is recommend approval of Resolution, recommending approval of Resolution zero seven twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell, have, may I have a motion and a second to move Resolution zero seven dash twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five to the floor for discussion or approval?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Polk.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor McKelvin. Any question for this resolution? Mr. Manager, one question. Where do the Palm Beach County Legal Cities stand at this particular time period?
Palm Beach County Legal Cities and the Florida Legal Cities stand in support of this resolution.
Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you. Any additional questions for this Resolution from this Commission? Here, non?
Yes, help, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Attorney, are there some action, class action suits? What is the status in terms of litigation?
There are no class action suits related to this that I'm aware of. It's merely providing additional security and protection from disclosure for these election workers who work, dealing with code enforcement issues and just dealing with election issues in general. So this is a pretty benign statute, and it would really allow for these workers to be protected in the same way that other similarly situated positions are right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney, and thank you, Commissioner Barry. Any additional question from this Commission for Resolution zero seven dash twenty-twenty-five? Here, non, Mr. Collins, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Collins, it passes by all Commissioners. Resolution zero eight dash twenty-twenty-five, Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
Resolution number zero eight dash two thousand twenty-five. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the City Manager to enter into a marketing agreement with Utility Service Partners Private Label, Inc., DBA Service Line Warranties of America, for advertisement to the city's residents of warranty plans for repairs of external water lines, external sewer lines, in-home plumbing on residential property, provided for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, City Manager Campbell.
Mayor Commission, Mayor-
Mayor Commission, Mayor Commission, the City of South Bay desires to offer property owners the opportunity, but not the obligation, to purchase a service plan for their external water lines, external sewer lines, and in-home plumbing. Utility Service Partners Private Label, Inc., Service Line Warranties of America, a subsidiary of HomeServe USA Corp., is the administrator of the National Legal Cities Service Line Warranty Program, and has agreed to make the products available to property owners subject to the terms and conditions contained within the marketing agreement. The very specifically, should you as a property owner, currently, you, all your repairs on the opposite side, for this, for instance, either your water line or FPNL line, anything beyond their side, if the damage occurs on your side, it is your responsibility to pay for. What this would provide is the service plan to make those repairs on your side, should you opt to do it. So if the pipe bursts on your side and you have this plan, then it is just a service warranty package for the residents. The exterior water service plan for the residents would start at five ninety-nine per month. Exterior sewer plan could start at seven ninety-nine per month. And the plumbing and or drainage plan could start at nine ninety-nine per month. So this is something that will be offered to the residents here in the City of South Bay. And you, if we move forward with this, the advertisement from HomeServe and or, excuse me, Utility Service Partners would began, and it is the, is the resident's choice, is how they move forward. However, through the National Legal Cities and HomeServe Utility Service Partners, they are unable to move forward or do any marketing in the city without consideration to the, from, without consideration from the commission, staff is recommending approval.
Right, thanks, City Manager Campbell, may I have a motion and a second to move resolution zero eight dash twenty twenty five to the floor for discussion and approval?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Polk.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor McKelvin, any question for this resolution from this commission?
A question, Mr. Barry.
Commissioner Barry.
In the public, how is this plan working in similar cities in Souths?
That's, oh, no, I have, I have feedback, I had the opportunity to, while in DC, speak with the representatives for this plan, and they gave, now, of course, they gave rave reviews from the NLC side, from HomeServe side, but I also, we had a virtual call with another municipality that is using it and doing the marketing agreement. Everyone is in favor, they were all in favor of it. So I did have that opportunity to have that conversation. Now, if there are some complaints out there, I'm unaware of, of course, this was a meeting. And everyone was in favor that I had opportunity to speak with.
And the plan is voluntary, of course.
Correct.
The city was just served as a conduit to provide, this plan is here.
Correct.
No financial impact to the city.
None.
Question.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry, Commissioner Polk, I meant, Commissioner King, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question, how would we, if, if we approve this, how would we get this information out to the residents and inform them about this service that will be provided as an option?
Home Service USA Utility Service Partners, they will be doing all of the marketing. We're just giving them permission to provide this product to our residents.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner King, City Manager, I, I just want to ask one question.
Yes.
I think that it was some letters going out for the last two or three years to people's homes, and I think it's for Florida Power and Light on it about some water service, I, I don't know if you all received that. I know a lot of people received that letter, is this, is this something different from that?
It is, that is a similar yet different. That is directly with FPNL, Next Air Energy, and their corporation as the utility agency within the state of Florida, that is what it is. Now, is it Home Serve? Yes, Home Serve is still a part of the FPNL product line as well. So it's same yet different.
All right, and thank you, sir, I appreciate that, sir, in addition question for this resolution from this commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Freeman, will you come to the mic, please? Just take your name and your address, please.
I'm Mary Freeman, I live at one thirty-five Southwest Seventh Avenue. I've had Home Serve ever since, for, I'd say, thirty or forty years, because I've been in my house, you know, built. And I've called them out many times.
Will you speak in your mic there, please?
Oh, I, and then, I can't see where they is any good at all. Because I had a plumbing problem, and I have leaking pipes in my house. And they come out and they service it, and I had to pay so much for the service call. And then I had plumbing last year, this year, and I spent like ten thousand dollars on the plumbing. And Home Serve come out just to stop a leak in my house, and they don't do that. And I don't know exactly how much I was paying, but Home Serve haven't been doing me no favors at all. Now, I don't know about getting this insurance with Home Serve, whether they're going to come out and fix pipes that's, that's broken in my house. And I, I just dropped, I dropped the insurance about, I guess, a month or two ago. Because they definitely wasn't doing anything for me. And I've had all kind of problems. So, good luck.
Thank you, no, thank you, Ms. Freeman, we do appreciate that feedback from you in reference to this resolution here. Commission, any discussion from this commission in reference to this resolution at this present time? I, I just want to, yes, it is, we have a resident here saying that she have had a problem with this particular company here. I don't want, you know, they come and saw marketing this of what they're going to do with our residents, and all of a sudden our residents decided they want to sign a contract with this particular company, and they are not getting the service from those particular company. That's not good, that's not, that's, that's not doing the right thing or treating them in a fair, a fair way. My thing is that at this present time, is I'm getting something, getting this negative feedback from this residents here. Mr. Manager, is there any type of way a representative could come and talk to us about these different things within the City of South Bay before we move forward on this, sir?
We could, you could table this item, and I could ask that question, and they would, we can probably have someone here online to present and have the conversation with the commission.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Madam Attorney.
Yes, I will just say, and not having anything to do with what you all are discussing, whether you decide to do it or not. But they, the company was, was agreeable with, I had some suggestions for the contract, and one of them was an indemnification clause where they had us indemnifying them and that kind of thing. And so we, we had them change it, so they're indemnifying the city. And so that was one of the changes that was made, so in terms of legal liability, if something happens, if there, it's their liability. It's not having anything to do with the city. So, just so you know, whether you decide to go forward with it or not, if somebody sues, because they're unhappy, it's just the company that will be responsible, won't be the city.
Thank you, you answered a question I was going to come back with, but thank you for answering that for me, because due to the fact when it comes down to liability to sue, will it fall, will, will it fall on the city, but it would be between the residents and the company.
Right, and the company.
All right, and thank you, I appreciate that, Madam Attorney, any more discussion at this present time?
Just for clarity, this resolution addresses permission to come into the city to market only, okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Polk?
Yes, so will the city benefit anything as a result of their successes?
We did have the conversation about some type of percentage coming to the city, and I was looking for that language so I can read it out to you and see exactly what that was.
I think it was something about ten percent, in reference to the city will receive. I read that, sir, in the, in the bottom line.
It is ten percent.
Ten percent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Commissioner.
My, my question would be for City Attorney, and I know you represent the city, but have you had the opportunity to look over the agreement to just see how would it benefit the residents? Or is it in the best interest of the residents also?
Well, I, again, that is, that's something I wouldn't know about, but in terms of the city itself, there is some remuneration that the city gets in terms of percentage with every sale that this marketing agreement yields, so it's a city benefit. I'm not sure, you know, you heard from a resident here, I'm not sure if that's going to be typical of the service that you're going to get, and it's certainly worth looking into and having representative come and answer your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk, Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would still go forward with table in it and let them come out, because I don't, for me, I don't want to, you know, bring this, this company to our city. And at some point, you know, we're, it's like we're recommending them to bring a service to our residents, and they're not giving, you know, good service, you know, then, you know, it's, it, it still would fall back on us, you know, as leaders, as providing, advising them to, you know, use this, this, this service, even though it is optional, but we're recommend, it's like we're recommending them to bring this service to our residents, and they're not, their services are poor, it's their will reflect on us as leaders. So I would say, let's table it, let them come out and, you know, and see what they have to say.
We, we, we have a motion on the floor at this present time, and I'm not for sure whether this commission want to rescind this and then make another motion in reference to table in this particular resolution.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to table does take precedence, so you would consider that motion first.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
With that said, may I make a motion to table this at a time designated by the manager?
Thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Barry to table resolution zero eight point, eight point twenty twenty five, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk, any discussion in reference to table this particular item at this present time, here none, Mr. Collins, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowles.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you, Commissioner, to table this, to pass by all commissioners, we'll continue tonight. Resolution ten.
Zero nine.
Zero nine, okay, thank you, sir, I didn't see that one there, so yes, sir, I see it now. Resolution zero nine dash twenty twenty five, Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
Resolution number zero nine dash twenty twenty five. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the piggyback purchase from the Florida Sheriff's Association Cooperative Purchasing Program, FSA twenty-three dash EQU twenty-one point zero, for a new Instalert twenty-four message display board and ATS dash five trailer, twenty twenty four, from All Traffic Solutions, Inc., providing for adoption of representation, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, City Manager Campbell.
Mayor Commission, we finally here with the mobile message board, I know this one item dates back for a while. And we finally made it to the point, we have the funding in place to support the purchase of the new Instalert twenty-four message display, display board. It would be the mobile display board, has a solar charging stations. We will be able to move our conversation around the city with that display board. Staff is recommending approval of resolution zero nine twenty twenty five.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell, may I have a motion and a second to, to move to the floor, resolution zero seven, zero nine twenty twenty four for the approval, a motion and a, and a second.
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk, any question for this resolution zero nine twenty twenty five from this commission?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
So, very excited about this piece here. My question is, have we done the research into the equipment to know that we're not going to have the same issues that we've had with the, with the sign here, the marquee up here, that, that some of, I guess, the parts, aftermarket parts, we can't find them, and so just knowing that we have double-checked that, you know, if we need a part for it, we'll be able to get it.
You need a part for it, you will be able to get this, yes.
It should be covered in the contract.
And that's my other question.
Yes, and as well, Mr. Collins, this is through your grant program, is that correct? And the amount, please, for that?
The amount for the.
Wait just a minute.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I have a motion.
Have you got an answer?
Yes, I appreciate her question.
Commissioner Barry.
The fifteen thousand two hundred forty-four dollars, that is the amount that's being reconsidered by the commission tonight.
And I think she asked, the warranty?
Three year.
Three year warranty, and that's for parts and everything?
Correct.
It's in the contract.
I don't have a contract in front of me.
In addition, in addition question from this, from this commission for resolution zero nine twenty twenty five, here none, Mr. Collins, call the role, please.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Cowles.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Collins, it passes by all commissioners, thank you, commission, we'll continue our resolution tonight, resolution ten twenty twenty five, Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
Resolution number ten dash twenty twenty five. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, accepting the bid from Her Homes LLC for the provision of water main replacement improvements on Northwest Tenth Avenue between MLK Boulevard and Northwest Second Street, authorizing the proper officials to enter into an, an agreement to be funded by Palm Beach County Water Utilities Department, R two zero one six dash zero eight nine one, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, City Manager.
Smer Commission, we received two proposals for the water main replacement improvements on Northwest Tenth Avenue, one from Her Homes, one from SMG Contractors. And Her Homes, excuse me, Her Home was the most responsive and responsible bidder for the work at a cost of seven hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Staff is recommending approval of Her Homes LLC water bid and agreement to Her Homes LLC for the water main replacement on Northwest Tenth Avenue. As you are aware, this is also the roadway that we will receive reconstruction support from F dot following the roadway, the, excuse me, the water main replacement improvements. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell, may I have a motion and a second to move resolution ten dash twenty twenty five to the floor for discussion and approval? Move by Commissioner Barry?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor McKelvin, any question at this present time from these commissioners for resolution ten dash twenty twenty five? One question, Mr. Uh, one question, Mr. Campbell, uh, City Manager Campbell, her, her construction company, have they been working in the city before?
They are currently...
Yes.
Yes. They are currently doing the work
I know.
in the southeast section, uh, the water main, I mean, not water main, but the storm water replacement in the southeast section.
All right. And thank you, sir. In addition, question at this present time from this commission. You're non, Mr. Collins, call the roll, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Kauf.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you, City Manager Campbell, and thank you, Commissioner, by all commissioners. Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
Resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-five. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the city manager to piggyback the Florida Sheriff's Association Cooperative Purchasing Program, contract number FSA twenty-four dash BEL thirty-two point zero for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-four Chevrolet Express Passenger RWD thirty-five hundred one fifty-five vehicle, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for allocation of funds, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Senator Manager Campbell.
Mayor Commission, a city is in need of a new twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Express Passenger, rear-wheel-drive thirty-five hundred van at the cost of forty-five thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars. We will piggyback off of the Florida Sheriff's Association Cooperative Purchasing Program. Staff is recommending approval of allowing the manager to piggy, for us to piggyback off of the Florida Sheriff Purchasing Program.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that. Um, what department is the, um, the funds coming out of?
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation.
And it is budgeted, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Have any other questions? Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Seven. We have a motion and a second for resolution...
Eleven.
Eleven dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Collins, can you call the roll?
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes. And the mayor stepped out for a second. Moving on to resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Collins, can you read the resolution for the record?
Resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-five. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing execution of a master lease agreement with Bancorp Bank National Association for a new twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Express Passenger RWD thirty-five hundred one five five from Garber Chevrolet Buick GMC, Inc., providing for adoption or representation, provided for an effective date.
Thank you for that reading of resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-five. City Manager Campbell.
Mayor Commission, Vice Mayor, the, this is you purchasing the vehicle now from the piggyback pursuant to the master lease agreement, open-end lease for the twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Express vehicle. City Commission expresses its intent to enter to a forty-eight-month annual term lease. The total asset cost is forty-five thousand four hundred thirteen dollars. There's a six point five percent interest rate, uh, for a total cost, total cost of forty-nine thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. There will be four annualized payments of twelve thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars, uh, due essentially the month following delivery, uh, March, April, um, annually. Staff recommends approval of resolution twelve twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell. Do any questions for resolution? I may have a motion and a second to move resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-five to the floor for discussion and approval.
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin? May, may I have a second? I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Have any discussions from the commission?
There is no direct relationship between resolution eleven and resolution twelve.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, there is.
There is.
Resolution eleven was, was the piggyback.
It goes together.
I'm sorry I missed that. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, when, oh, I'm sorry. When, when would the van be here?
After following your consideration.
Okay.
Any more questions? Correct. Also, um, so would the, the van be utilized for, uh, seniors as well as the youth, the youth in commu, in the community?
Correct. The same way they are, the existing vehicles are used within the recreation department. Our, our older express, um, that was donated to the city, of course, it's seeing some maintenance issues and it is meeting its life expectancy. And some of the residents, some of our, uh, more mature residents are deceased. You know, they're experiencing some, in that space. So we just want to, you budgeted, approved it in the budget, and we are now executing that opportunity. But I don't know if I answered the question.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other questions for the, from the commissioners?
No question.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Collins, would you call the roll?
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yeah.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Kauf?
Yes.
It passes five to zero.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll continue with agenda for tonight. We'll do all every school, our report, financial, uh, finance, our report. Commissioner Barry or either Mr. Massey?
Mr. Massey, we didn't have any issues with the AP report, did we? In our discussion, and this is the AP report for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Please make a note that the report and, uh, the motion to approve should appear in the minutes for the meeting. I don't know if they're consistently noted in the minutes. Are you following me?
If what is consistently noted up?
The motion to approve the accounts payable report
Oh, okay.
for every commission meeting where we are in session.
Yes. We have a motion, uh, to approve the financial report. May I have a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Vice Mayor McKelvin. Any question for the financial report? You're non, Mr. Collins, call the roll, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Kauf.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you, City Manager Campbell, and pass about all commissioners. The fin, uh, City Clerk's report.
Um, twenty, the FLC Annual Conference for twenty twenty-five is August fourteenth through the sixteenth. NLC City Summit, November nineteenth through the twenty-second. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any question from this commission per the City Clerk's report? You're non, we continue, City Manager report.
Mr. Mayor, just a few items, um, here. During your prior meetings, you had conversations regarding the, oh, gosh, I just went blank. The land use and the rezoning to take place at the Glaze Asphalt Plant. In your backup is the actual site plan, uh, for your consideration. Staff is recommending after review by the, um, planner, is reg, making a recommendation to approve the site plan, overall site plan for the Glaze Asphalt Site here in the City of South Bay. So there you can have, take that consideration at this time to move forward with that, um, site plan recommendation. This is what the site is going to look like, um, that's in your backup, the roadway, the parking, the signage, all of that is... Or, no? Mayor Commission, I will pull that item for your, and the backup is not there for you to review. Um, it's...
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure. Do you have the, I don't see the...
I know, and that's why I'm pulling it, the site plan, I'm pulling that because I'm looking in the backup and don't see it in here for the commission to review. So Cox Park, Cox Park is, uh, received a message from Commissioner Polk last week. Now I just want to give the update to the public that Cox Park Playground in itself, the, is closed. The fencing was installed due to, uh, some damage at the park and we are closing the actual playground equipment, um, at this, at this time until it could get repaired or replaced. I've had one contractor come and look at it and stated, and it was actually the contractor that installed in the playground, um, equipment provider. Those parts from three, approximately four years ago are not available. Um, they are researching them, but they did provide a cost to replace the playground equipment at seventy-one thousand dollars to replace that area, to repair, to replace the equipment and repair the area, the bench, the fencing at seventy-one thousand dollars at this current time. But we will do further investigation. Uh, of course, I'm going to have to put out a bid, um, wholly for it, but I wanted to give the commission some insight as to what we are looking at, at this present moment, um, at Cox Park. Um, but it is going to, the playground area is going to be closed for a extended period of time. And we're just residents, we are asking for your support, not to climb the fence, not to just watch your kids, to ensure that they are not climbing the fence area or putting themselves, um, in that space that is currently closed. So that is where we are as part of the Cox Park update at this moment. The playground, the basketball court is fully open, the gazebo is open, the, uh, areas around it is open, um, because we do know that it's not a closed-in park, it is completely accessible. However, the playground area, um, is closed at this present time. I'll take any questions from the commission if there are any.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell, and, uh, thanks to the commissioners for really just paying attention to Cox Park. And I just want the residents to know as well in reference to Cox Park, I think this is the third?
Third time.
Third time we have repair, we have replaced the equipment, the playground equipment at that particular park there. And for some reason, our, our youth is, our young peoples is not pleased with what, what's out there. They're not happy. We say like they're not happy because we see kids as, they pick a rock, they burst, they burst their playground equipment, they have an elephant something, they tore the nose off of it, they took the sliding bolt and it's, it's spread up in the air and let it go down and then they pulled it from the, from the top of the playground, the sliding bolt area there. They're really constantly destroying that particular area there. And I'm just pleading to the parents, I'm pleading to the parents, please, help us, help us. Once we repair this particular playground, uh, this playground area again, please work with us in making sure that our kids do not destroy. Kids jump on the fence up there and start jumping up and down on the fence like they're riding a horse there, the fence is always torn down there. Even if it's a wrong fence on the outside, they, they be on top of that as well. So I'm just pleading to the parents, please help us out and making sure that the next time we replace that equipment, let's try and make sure we talking to our kids and make sure that equipment out there for them to enjoy themselves, to have fun, not to destroy. And we're constantly replacing this. The last time they, they set a fire up under the equipment, you know, and this is what happening. So I'm pleading to parents tonight, not to the kids, I'm pleading to parents to help us, to watch out, to make sure that our kids do not destroy our playground equipment at Cox Park. Thank you. Any additional question from this commission per Cox Park from the, uh, City Manager Report?
We have a...
Or Commissioner Polk and then Commissioner Barry?
Um, yeah, and I, I echo the words of, of what the mayor is saying, and I would, uh, uh, make it my business to be more visual out there, um, as a resident, pastor, and commissioner, to spend some time in the park. And I would also admonish any of the residents that may have recreational ideas or things that you could go in the park and offer to our, uh, youth, uh, you know, and, and let's try and see if we could come up with some ideas of how we can occupy their time. Because like the mayor say, hey, they destroying the park and we don't want to just point fingers on them, but, uh, we want to sort of educate them and do so in, in, enlightening them, maybe over a kickball game or something out there. So I would say we be strategic in our thinking as far as how we move forward in enlightening our rest, our residents. So, um, let's take this as an opportunity to educate them as well, even if we could put out a piece, um, uh, 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 some type of information via, uh, whatever platforms we have. But let's use that opportunity to, uh, educate them and create maybe some type of recreation where they don't have to, because now the park is closed, so it won't be anywhere for the younger children that utilize that park that's closed to go and recreate. So, um, we can come up with some type of ideas. That, that'll be my suggestions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Commissioner Barry, you had something?
Yes, maybe this is an item we can post on, at South Bay. We can put a statement, protect our park, honor our history. And maybe we're not aware that park is honored, named for Benita Cox, and she served on this dais before I did. So it's important that we capture and maintain that history. So we can replace the equipment, but the symbolism of a park named after a commissioner. She also served as vice mayor. And I, keep in mind, it's our history, it's our place. So we can, can we put something, what are your suggestions? What, what would you like? Maybe we could have church in the park, you know, that might not be a bad idea, do some food. And, and, and say, this is, this is our honored space. And we're, the word, our actions speak for our respect for that place. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. One of the things that I noticed that, you know, I know that Commissioner King, she had the monument right out in, uh, across from the village there in Cox Park there. And one day I was passing by there and I seen two kids and I got up on top of it and start running, you know, climbing that and I, you know, I had to stop and tell them, hey, kids, come down, you know? You know, you're going to hurt yourself. I said, you're going to hurt yourself, you know, up there. So these are the things that is taking place at Cox Park in reference to our kids and what they're doing. We can't get upset with them, we can't yell at them, we can't holler at them, we just need to try and continue to educate them or talk to them, show that we love them and showing that it's what they, equipment for, for the young peoples in that playground area there. We see some older kids out there as well, but we're going to continue to move forward in reference to Cox Park. We're going to continue to have that equipment replaced as well. But we're going to work together as a team in this city of South Bay to make a difference. Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor McKelvin and then Commissioner King.
Yes, I, I think we need to also, um, look at what type of equipment we want to put back into Cox Park. Um, like we said, seven one thousand dollar worth of damage. Uh, this will be our third time having to replace the equipment. So maybe we need to try to find something that's more conducive to our environment. I don't know, we just want to put some swings up there or, um, I mean, just something that's, that don't cost over seven one thousand dollars. Because as we know, it's going to happen again. Um, but I think we can also educate our community at the town hall meeting as well. Uh, you know, plead with them, you know, your kids going out to the park, go out to the park with your kids. Don't just let a five and six-year-old go to the park by themselves. Go out there and monitor them. And let's start using our cameras. We got the camera system out there. If we start going to knock on that, hey, we got your, your son or your daughter out there vandalizing our parks. Now just a warning, now the next step is going, we're going to get Palm Beach County Sheriff Department involved. So we got to start holding our residents, our citizens accountable. So we got to start holding our residents, our citizens accountable. I mean, I know it's the kids, but you gonna send your kids to the park, you go out there to the park with your kids, because they destroying city property.
Thank you, Vice, Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Vice Mayor pretty much, um, said what I've, you know, some of the things I wanted to say, um, and also we can, that would be a, a ideal spot for our town hall meeting so that we can, at that time, also educate our residents of the history of that, that park. Because former mayor, Benita Cl- Benita Cox was the first African-American woman to be elected mayor here in the city of South Bay. And I'm sure our residents, um, don't have that, that, that history of, um, her background and the reason for that, that, that park being dedicated, um, to her. So, um, I echo, you know, whatever one said.
Thank you, Commissioner, we do appreciate you, you know, what you said in reference to the park, because I know you're, you know, it's to your heart, and I know that you want to make sure that our kids have someplace to go, safe and play each and every day. City Manager, we do apologize for prolonging that particular issue that's served, but you can continue to serve your report.
No apology needed, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, that discussion was, it was helpful. Um, state and federal legislative update, all of our states on, state side, it, it, they are moving forward, your three items. The Park of Commerce, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, Southwest Eleven Avenue Improvements, two-point-five million, um, and the Resiliency Hub items, so they all have a, a, uh, funding number as of today, and your, uh, those items are moving as well. Now I know that we also took a conversation regarding rural communities, um, and being, we are a rural community with Senator Simmons, these, Senator Simon, the Senate President. There is a delete-all legislation that's been, uh, published, I will share that information with you. And very specifically in section nineteen, um, found on page twenty-nine and somewhere in that space, it speaks to areas such as the city of South Bay and some of the possible benefits and how it's laid out through the, um, Freddie could be the Florida Heartland Rural Economic Development Initiative Organization could serve as a fiscal agent as a part of the, um, current bill being presented by, um, Senator, by Senate President Simon. So those items are moving forward in, on the state side. Here's the other news, on the federal side, as, as the commission know and have learned, uh, while in DC, some action, some activity was taking place regarding the bill, or the budget that was approved, uh, last Friday. In that budget that was presented from the House to the Senate, all of the community-funded projects, be it Democratic or Republican, they were removed, uh, not funded as part of that bill moving over to the Senate side. On Friday, the Senate approved that bill, uh, without any community-funded projects. What does that mean to South Bay? South Bay, one million dollar request for Tana Park that was going to do the helicopiles, the pylons, would, was removed from that item, meaning we will have to start all over, uh, from the beginning should the US Congress give an opportunity for those commun- CFPs, the community-funded projects in any upcoming budget conversation. So at this time, those federal dollars that we made application for last year are no longer available to the city for the construction of our emergency shelter care center here in the city of South Bay. And that is our federal legislative update from an appropriations perspective for the commission and the community. Any questions from the commission?
No, Mr. Manager, I just wanted to say thank you all, thank you, thank Jordan, and thank the commissions for being present at the state and at the federal level in reference to our representative, our congressmen and our senators as well. And the work that they did while they was up there, it wasn't going up just to be there, they was actually in session, you know, all the time. And I just wanted to thank the commission, I appreciate the work that you all did while we was in Tallahassee and also when we was in Washington DC.
Mr. Mayor, may I-
Oh, Commissioner Barry.
Correction, I did not physically attend the National League or the Florida League. However, I reached out to the manager and informed him that I could do it virtually. We had one senator in Washington and I was on that virtual experience. It's quite an experience as you engage in this kind of, uh, discussion, conversation. I was not able to virtual on the state side, but as we explore technology use, we can incorporate different modalities for distribution of information. Because I'm quite sure some residents or businesses would have appreciated the opportunity to have a virtual experience. I commend the manager for this, uh, it was all video, excellent, thank you for that, uh, brainstorming, and thank you for working with me. So that is how I represented the city of South Bay. Also, I've reached out to committing, not committee, you know, committee members via technology again, supporting the legislative priorities for the city of South Bay. And as we engage in our travels, let's use different options for that engagement. And that will truly put us in a twenty-second or twenty-third modality space for contacting our representative. You can reach out, you can call, because it's, it's not over yet, uh, and we will continue, I will continue to do that. I will continue to represent you, I will continue in transparency and accountability. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry, we as a team, Commissioner Barry, wherever we go, that, you know, always, always, we understand that, you know, sometimes you are not able to travel, but the thing about it, we as a team represent the city of South Bay as five, not just four of us, it's five of us alone, and our city manager and staff member as well. But thank you for that, I do appreciate it, dear, the morning when you called, when we was in, uh, uh, Tallahassee, you was on the phone there talking to the city manager during that particular time period, and we do appreciate it, dear, thank you. Um, Mr. Campbell, your last and final item, D?
The facility security, currently at Tana Park, the renters could only, uh, in accordance to, um, our application, security could only be provided by an agency that has arresting power such as PBSO, Florida Highway Patrol, Florida Fish and Wildlife. It, some resident, some renters, it's been a challenge with them securing proper security through those agencies. One of the, um, issues on the weekend, of course, uh, PBSO is providing, um, heavy detail to the president, and just securing overtime off-duty deputies for events is posing a challenge. Our application does not allow for any other type of security to take place. What staff is desiring is to, um, have private security available, um, for those resident, excuse me, for those renters, if at all possible. It does not exempt them from making an attempt to get security with PBSO or through PBSO. It would only allow them if that fail, for them to get security with a private firm as a last resort. So staff wants to explore the opportunity, if it's a desire of the commission, to provide an opportunity for those renters to get private security from a, from those agencies that are properly licensed, bonded, insured, um, in all of the necessary, um, liability pieces in place as a security company, that they are able to provide security at those and for the renters at Tana Park. And, um, staff would like to explore that option for the renters. Now, yes, those companies will be required, if it's a desire of the commission to move in that direction. Those companies will be required to become vendors, receive a license, provide all of the necessary documentation through our licensing department, um, should we move in that direction for res- for renters to get that type of security other than from PB, from the agency with arresting power. That is for your conversation, Mayor Commission, before we put any additional, um, research, um, into it, if it's that is a, something the commission is comfortable with moving forward with. Not so much comfortable, but desire us to do some additional work.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell, any comment on the City Manager? We'll come in at a spread of time, right? Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
So we, it will remain as, uh, security will be provided only through-
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department, an agency with arresting power.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commission.
Thank you.
Now, the last item, uh, Mayor Commission, we need to call, um, an actual local planning meeting for this commission to take place. We have several items, um, in research that the manager is unable to do anything with at this present time. Be it variances for certain lots, some lot splits, um, replating, um, that we need to, um, take care of. Now, what is causing, our staff is learning all of this, it's due to the growth that's occurring. And our code is, um, I'm not gonna say from nineteen-sixty-nine and twenty-ten updates, it's just posing some challenges with administrative, um, authority and/or Board of Adjustments, Planning and Zoning Board, local planning agency to hear these items and keep them moving. So in the very near future, if not on April first, there will, we must have a planning conversation during our commission meeting to hear these items. And one very specific, particular item is there's a, and, and I'm not trying to pull at your heartstrings by all means, but what was the real challenge is that we have a resident have a, um, a child that needs some additional assistance in, in the backyard, and our fencing code only allows for a four-foot, four-foot fence, and she actually, that resident needs a six-foot fence. And currently, presently, we're unable to do anything about it, I can't give that resident any authority to use any other type of fencing in that zoning other than a four-foot fence. So I know we have to do something, um, we, staff has done extensive research dating back to twenty-thirteen, well, dating back to two thousand and eight, when the last P and Z Planning and Zoning Board actually met-
When was the date?
To, uh, two thousand and eight, I didn't, I can't give you a date, uh, and in two thousand thirteen, during your June eighteenth meeting, is when there was a consensus and, uh, motion for the commission to serve as the local planning agency to move items forward. So now, these are some variances and some things that we just need to have a conversation about as for those actions to take place. The second piece is actually reviewing our code, um, and our applications, if they do exist, they exist or not exist, putting the proper applications in place for small and large development here in the city of South Bay and some of these small activities that are taking place on private lots. So I wanted to give that update to the commission, um, regarding some planning and land use activities here in the city of South Bay. Nothing else, Mayor?
Thank you, and then one other, Commissioner Barry?
I have worked on the, I have served as a volunteer on the city of South Bay Planning and Zoning Committee. It entails an orientation or training as well, you just cannot look at a document. You need some, some scope of reference, uh, recommendations, not even a recommendation, you need to know, understand what you're reading. And some documents, the detail, legal aspect, requires just additional refresher or training, orientation. Now, because of my past experience, I know the scope and the direction that I would suggest. Ms. Attorney, you have any comment regarding this item?
Um, no, I'm happy to, uh, in a workshop, give a, a refresher prior to your LPA meeting-
Excellent.
If the commission is, uh, desirable, desirable, desirous, excuse me.
Excellent, excellent, I'm glad you said workshop, because it is truly a workshop, thank you. Another item has to do with my zoning map from two thousand and seven, that's dated, and we have, we need an update, yes, the process, Mr. Mayor, um, this is the document that's on file. What is that process, how does it work? Uh, we have Mr. Horniman, who's familiar with the process, and we're talking about planning and zoning, the zoning map. Uh, what does that involve to update this? Last time, it was a commit, not a committee, we had experts in, and providing the direction and the design and the structure. Because even on this two thousand and seven map, there's some areas that we need to either include in the zone, exclude, and just freshen this up. So I would request that, because I have frequent observations from Vice Mayor and Commissioner Polk. What is that? What, oh, that's two thousand and seven, so if they've observed it, I'm just suggesting that we, uh, put this in motion. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Commission, if I may, just, um, when you say updating the zoning map, are you, it is, it is advantageous for, the, uh, the map is updated as we do projects. So if there's a rezoning taking place, we do, that area is updated. Now, that actual printout-
Yes.
Is what you're saying, you want to just have a cleaner printout?
A clean printout, but the updated ver- including the updated version.
That will be done this year, in the coming years, as part of our, um, EAR.
Okay.
The five-year EAR that we are preparing to do in the comp plan update as well. Now, the, there's also an application with the Florida Commerce in place to do our massive update to the comprehensive plan, which would include the zoning map.
The map, okay, excellent.
With a, whatever year that takes place and is adopted- With a, whatever year that takes place and is adopted, that's when we would do a total and a comprehensive update to the zoning map. But we do update the parcels as development takes place. We're just not printing out of that area. So if I had the information in front of you regarding the site plan, you would have seen some of those zoning areas, what they, what was existing and proposed, and subsequently adopted.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manager, what are your questions from this commission?
No, I just wanted to put it on the radar that there, we must have a LPA hearing. So will you see it on your agenda at the April 1st meeting? You'll see several items outlined that would take place as long as we have all the backup in place in order to, excuse me, in order to move those items for your consideration as a planning board.
Thank you, sir.
And then hear them later as the commission.
Thank you, sir, and I do appreciate that. Any question, additional question for the City Manager's presentation report from this commission?
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to follow, I think I did send you an email, Mr. Manager, about maybe with the county, some of those water lines that they repaired that it left a pothole in the middle of the street, because it's one on Northwest 9th.
I can give you an update on that. The Communications Department with Palm Beach County Water Utilities has received it, and they will provide me a work order number, if not sometime tonight, probably sometime tomorrow. But they have provide, I sent that email and correspondence to Palm Beach County Water Utilities, and they will give me a work order number on the item that was shared from Commissioner Pope.
Thank you, Commissioner Pope. All right, thank you, City Manager Kamala, thank you, Commissioner Pope. We'll continue with our agenda tonight. City Attorney's Report?
No report at this time, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Attorney, report from Senator Bermanoff. Do you have anything, Ms. Ryan? Thank you, and I do appreciate, appreciate you being here. The Shanthaparkman? Thank you, sir, we do appreciate that. Future agenda items. Here are nine. Commissioner Kamala for the Good Order, Commissioner King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to take the time out to thank all of you all, your time that you came out to participate in tonight's meeting. It's been a very productive meeting, and I appreciate everybody contributions from Lake Show Middle School students, to the public comments, and all of our thoughtful decisions we have made on these various issues. As our city, we will continue to make strive to make our city a better community, a more inclusive community. But we know that there's much work still ahead of us. So everyone's voice does matter. And through these conversations that we're, we have, we can ensure our decision reflects the needs and the distress for everyone we represent here in the city of South Bay. I encourage everybody to stay involved, sharing your thoughts, and working together towards the solutions that move us forward. We are a strong city here in South Bay. When we all engage and collaborate together, I am proud to say that I served, live, work, and play here in the city of South Bay. So, thank you once again, City Manager, and our city staff, our attorney, PBSO, my co-commissionists, fellow commissioners, but most of all, our citizens. Thank y'all. And thank everyone for a work well done in helping to make South Bay a better, loving, fun place to live, work, and play. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner King, Commissioner Pope.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to thank everyone again for coming out tonight. We appreciate Pastor Bee, Brother in the Gospel, thank you for what you all are doing at Mount Calvary Gamma. Make sure you send our regards, let alone that we support, absolutely. There's a long list of items that you guys have, well, I should say we have. I'm being a part of Gamma as well, but, thank you. Make sure you send them our regards from the mayor and all of us. But again, to staff, City Manager, everyone, God bless you. Thank you all for what you're doing. I do appreciate the city of South Bay, the residents. You know, we were in Tallahassee, and we were, father, we were in Washington DC. And, you know, it's such a privilege to be able to serve on behalf of the residents of the city of South Bay. So I just want to say to you all, thank you all for the privilege and the opportunity to be able to serve and to be able to advocate on behalf of this city that we all love. And so we'll continue to pray for the family. We had a family that had a tragic, it was a tragedy in our city on Saturday. So let's continue to lift that family up, and let's just continue to pray for our city. And again, thank you all for the opportunity to serve. God bless you, good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Pope. Commissioner Barry?
Yes, as a closing remark, the Auditor Selection Committee met, and we have a recommendation that we will present to the commission, and we will ask the commission the direction moving forward. And I am proud to serve as the chair of that committee. We have members here present this evening, Betty Bernard. We also have Ms. Crawford, and I think we have Ms. Fuchs, is that correct? Yes. And the other members are John Wilson, and of course, Esther Beer. So thank you. I serve in different ways. Actions speak volume, actions speaks volume. In addition to that, I had the opportunity to serve on a committee dealing with the preparation of legislative priorities to be presented at the state that resulted in your visitation. And I am saying have a pleasant evening and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry, Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be probably the shortest one. But now, just to piggyback on the Rosenwald Elementary School report, starting this summer on June 3rd through August 31st, we will be having our Seventh Annual Rosenwald Summer Academy. We're gonna be focusing on, from 7:30 to 12 o'clock, it's gonna be academics, Monday through Friday, and then from 12:30 to 4:30, it's gonna be recreation. So we're trying to focus on preventing our students from having that summer slide. It has worked in the past, where I'm trying to actually raise my numbers from 100 to 150 students that we're gonna be serving. And then on every Friday, it's free field trips. We try to take them out of their environment, you know, take them to West Palm, take them to different places, and it's absolutely free. So people online, or if you have parents in the audience, you want to sign your kids up, K through 5, they don't have to just be going, they don't have to just go to Rosenwald, they can go to any other elementary schools in our district. For middle school, probably gonna be having, I'm looking to have at least probably like between 10 to 15 middle school to actually, students to actually volunteer. That way they can get volunteer hours as well. And they will be included into going into the field trips and all that good stuff. So Dr. Jacobs and Mr. McKelvin, I'll get with you guys sometime this week, so we can kind of set that up. On that note, have a blessed night. May God continue to bless you and your families.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I did over everything I said tonight, but, Commissioner, we have, we have a duty here. We have to do our evaluation on our city manager. We received the package tonight, and we'll move forward. The timeline is on inside of this package here in reference to the City Manager Evaluation, and we'll go from there. Also, I just want to say thank you all. Thanks to Commissioner, City Manager, and staff for the wonderful job they did in Tallahassee and then Washington DC. It's great that you have commissions that work together instead of fighting against each other, not really working as a team. We have worked out, we worked out a team in Tallahassee, we worked out a team in Washington DC, because we know what our priority was and what our duty was towards you all. And they did a fantastic job, and I did, I just want to say thanks, and I do appreciate all the work they do, did while we was in Tallahassee and Washington DC. But most of all, I just want to say to the residents, and thank you all. Thank you for the wonderful work that you do in the city of South Bay, and thank you for just being a part of what is taking place within the city of South Bay. Madam Attorney, thank you. Whenever we need you, you always answer the question that we ask of you. We do appreciate that. And we're gonna continue to work as a team within the city of South Bay. I say a team, it's not about the five that sit upon the dais. You're a part of this team as well. That's what make good, good teams of baseball, football, basketball, because you have a good team. I feel that we have a wonderful team in the city of South Bay. But I want to say to each and one of those, of those that's on the, on the line tonight, I want to say to you, we have the guys out there doing the tree trimming at this present time. And that's the reason for that, because we know the hurricane season will be coming up shortly. And want to make sure that those limbs are not touching those power lines, so therefore, when your lights go out, Florida Power Light would be able to get into your, to your area or behind your house, to make sure that your lights are restored as soon as possible. So I'm asking each and every one, just to work with those individuals. They need you to move your car, move your car. They need to go into your yard, allow them to go into your yard, to make sure those trees is down. While we was in, when we was in Tallahassee, we did receive texts in reference to the same situation, did with lights and tree limbs behind someone's house. And they were saying that the lights were off a certain amount of time because due to the fact Florida Power Light wasn't able to get to their resident to restore power. So I'm asking each and one of y'all to work with us. Talk to your neighbor, talk to your family, and talk to your friend, and let them know that, hey, we got to work together to make sure that whenever the hurricane come, your lights won't be out to weeks or two weeks where Florida Power Light can't get to your resident. So we're gonna continue to work together within the city of South Bay. And I said to each and every one of y'all, continue to pray for us each and every day, because due to the fact, without prayer, we are nothing. Pastor Bee, thank you, sir. Thank you for all the work you have done, what you are doing, and what your congregation is doing for the residents in the city of South Bay, especially when it comes down to your feeding program that you have. It's been very successful, sir, very successful. Because some of the people that tell me, well, you guys deliver food to their house, they don't have to go out and stand in line, you guys deliver it to their house, sir. That means fighting to the residents in the city of South Bay. And I just want to say thanks to you and your staff that do this each and every Wednesday within the city of South Bay. With that, I-
Mr. Mayor, point of voice. May I pass this back to the manager? I would like to have a sit-down with him. That is the process that I generally use. Thank you so much.
I did not provide those at the request of the commission during last year's evaluation. The manager was not to bring that item to the commission, and it was, so I had nothing to do with that. So I didn't prepare that information or the package.
That was not my intent. May I have a sit-down to discuss with you what's in the package? So I can evaluate?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You want the package, I'm gonna give it back to you.
I'll give it to you, right?
Yes. If you want me to shut it down, bye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, with that, I don't turn my motion to adjourn.
So move.
Meeting adjourned.